I'd like to call our special meeting to order on this October 25th. Mrs. Carpenter, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Here.
Dr. Drummond?
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Poland?
Here.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Here.
We have a quorum to conduct our business. Board members, if you'll look at your agenda, you'll see we do have one small action item that relates to student trips. This was an item that was on our future action items at the last meeting. Because of the timing of these trips, Dr. All asked us to take action on this at this meeting if we would. And with that, we'll entertain a motion or if there is any questions.
Mr. Gilmore, I'll move that we approve the Olahtha East and Olahtha Northwest yearbook and newspaper student trips to Nashville in November as listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman and Mr. Poland. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Ms. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move into the primary reason for our meeting tonight, and that's discussion of the Bond Task Force findings related to existing facilities and financial implications. And the first item on there is really just a bit of an open discussion among ourselves, board members, about some of our observations. I know we have been encouraged by Dr. All to visit some of our schools, which I know many of us have been able to do. And so we just open the floor for any comments that you might have or observations you might have related to those visits. Anything related to the Bond Task Force presentations you've attended, anything like that?
I'll go ahead and start. I had an opportunity last Thursday to go around and review a number of schools. And to me, it's always a great thing to do, to get out and see where the rubber meets the road. And probably the biggest thing that struck me is just the absolutely awesome can-do attitude that our teachers in our schools demonstrate. Just, I'll talk specifically about Central. Oh, that wasn't the only school that I went to. And just walking around there and seeing the creativity and the will to overcome and some of the wonderful things they've done with that facility. Walked down the basement, you know, heard a lot of positive things about the basement, saw a lot of vision there, things that potentially can be done in the future, saw some of the creative things they've done. I just think it goes back to being a tribute to the teachers that we have in this district and their wonderful positive attitude. And as I reflect back on that, I think as we go through the Bond Task Force findings and continue to meet on that and look at the wonderful work that the team has done, I just can't be silenced by the fact that we just have a lot of abundance around us. And I don't look at the fact that we've got problems, I look at the fact that we've got a heck of a lot of opportunities. And, you know, we're going to be a growing district for the next however many years. And yet, we have absolute capital needs out there. We're going to have that for a long time. We have had that. Look at what the district's done here over the last number of years, and they've addressed it extremely well, and I'm confident we'll do that going forward. It's just another opportunity to try and figure out what's the best way to spend the money and the timeframe that we have in front of us. So once again, I guess the theme I came away with, not only at Central but also at Indian Creek and some other schools I went to, is kudos to the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman. Anyone else?
Yeah, I saw the results of the fact that Mr. Thomason hasn't figured out a way to make cement block walls that are movable. We've built schools, our population has changed, we've, you know, we're suffering from our growth. But as Mr. Churchman echoed, or I'll echo what he said, that over the last year, I've been able to visit a lot of schools, Washington, Indian Creek, Central. And I'm just, every place I go, I'm truly amazed by the overcrowding. I'm truly amazed by the, like, I guess Mr. Churchman said, the can-do attitude. I've seen teachers that didn't have room for their reading students sitting in the hallway doing their reading lessons with those students. I'm just, you know, I've seen places where parents have come in and done graffiti on the wall, but it was asked-for graffiti. And what an amazing job. And, you know, it's just, the, I can't be, when I go out these places, I can't be prouder of our community from a standpoint of, you know, accepting the challenge. And it all goes back to the student. You know, those teachers, everything that I've seen, those teachers are, say, you know, they realize their responsibility as those students that they have that year. And they're taking care of them, they're doing whatever it takes. And, and so I guess, you know, we talk a lot about the needs for building technology and everything like that, but I just want to give my hands off to all those teachers that are in the classroom, what a marvelous job they're doing and the enthusiasm they show. Just one comment also with the issue of the buildings without the doors, without ceilings totally sealed between rooms and everything like that. Just, you know, sometimes what we're seeing there is a result of a change that they thought was necessary 20 years ago that now we're paying the price for. So sometimes change needs to be evaluated closely also. But I do, like I said, I just can't take, you know, give enough kudos to the teachers and the principals and the staff that are out there actually with our students. So I really take pride in that.
Thank you, Mr. Poland. Mr. Parker?
Dr. All's recommendation, also visited some schools as well. And would second Mr. Churchman and Mr. Poland's comments about the can-do, dare-to-dream attitude of all of our staff. And I want to especially call out our principals. As a building goes, is how the principal goes, and we have just some outstanding principals and met our new ones, and just doing an outstanding job because really, everything rises and falls on leadership. And it starts with that principal and that building. And when we get the staff that has that can-do attitude and that dare-to-dream attitude, it starts with, it starts with the superintendent and then it filters down to our principals. And, you know, I visited a number of schools, Indian Trail and Olahtha North. But I went to Ridgeview, and folks, if, I think every board member needs to go to Ridgeview. And that school, great, great teachers, great principal, people working really hard. But if we want to look at a school that, where there's inequities in the community in regards to what we have in some of our schools versus what our, our staff is working with in Ridgeview, Ridgeview is the example. And as a part of this bond issue, I think it's incumbent upon us to take a very, very serious look at Ridgeview and probably Central. I've said this before, and I'm going to keep saying it, those are two schools that are really in dire need of major, major overhaul. And I don't know that we can do it with the existing facility. Ridgeview is so chopped up and so, you walk down the hall and you see utility pipes and it's indescribable. And it's a compliment to the staff that are working there. They've used every nook and cranny. They got kids in the halls, they're teaching classes in the halls, and all the issues that we see at some of the other schools. So I know we've got issues with a lot of schools, but that's one of them that's definitely on my radar screen.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
I went to Ridgeview as a visit and Northview. Ridgeview definitely would be high on my priority list, too. This is a school that has a high, some high needs for some individual programs. And they're working very, very hard to meet those needs of children in the individual programs. And I'll reiterate again, we talked about it earlier, but you cannot look, we cannot look at a population of 300 students and look at the square footage or the facility and say it is meeting the needs of students. If we really look at population and what the needs and how we go about serving our students, they have ELL programs, they have three ELLs, teachers working in one large classroom, continuing to try and teach students. We have six classrooms that feed into one bathroom with one stall in each of those areas. So when I took the tour, there were many positives that were going on, and those certainly have to be celebrated. But when you look at how that facility is being used, it is maximizing every space that it has. They have a teacher's lounge that has three tables, and they cannot seat their staff for lunch or even close to seating their staff for lunch. They can seat probably 12 at the most because they're using that facility for Title I program, which is desperately needed. So I agree with Mr. Parker. I think it would be well worth everyone's time to go particularly to that school and to take a look at some of the needs that are there. They are going to be challenged with, for kindergarten, for first grades next year. And the biggest question now is where are they going to put those additional classrooms for their kids? So again, I would encourage all of us to take a look carefully at that school.
Ms. Ashley?
I took the opportunity to tour Oregon Trail Junior High with Jim Houghton, Tom Lilis, and the principal, Steve Massey. I had previously scheduled that tour even before Dr. All had suggested that we visit some of the older facilities because I recognize that this is a junior high that is next on our radar screen, if you will, for some, some major renovations. And had visited that school and did a tour last year. And I was reminded on the tour this year of the many needs at that school. It is crowded, and the way we will alleviate that problem will be with some additional classrooms. That, of course, may be contingent on when we decide to build another junior high school. So that could be a variable in that situation. But certainly in the area of the science program, there, there is a need there for fully equipped science rooms. There was one added to the building several years ago, but there are additional science classrooms needed. And particularly since in our Bond Task Force discussions, we're talking about the advantage of having fully equipped science classrooms for our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students. So it would seem entirely appropriate. But probably, that's a very specific thing, but walking into the building, the first thing that you notice are two things. The dim lighting, and I would love to take these lights over to Oregon Trail, throughout the building, very, very dim lighting. That's a function of the type of lighting that was put into that building. But not only is it dim, it's gross. It's those fluorescent lights that hang down from, below the ceiling level. So it's not only inadequate, but it's unattractive. And I know aesthetics aren't everything, it's just getting the light out that's important. But throughout the building, the lighting is dim. That includes the gymnasium. And I happen to be one who loves sunshine. I don't know that everybody does, but I think having adequate light is good for your eyesight. It facilitates your learning, it makes you feel better. So that definitely is an area that needs to be addressed there. The flooring is still carpet, and we're endeavoring to replace that with an epoxy type of covering, which would be a great improvement to that school. I won't go through all of the details because there are many. The fold-out tables and chairs that they use in the, in the commons area for lunch are the original ones in the building. It's, they're not only heavy, but they're difficult to move around, and they're damaged in many cases. So just things like that that would make it safer, not only for students but for our staff as well. And then in addition is the entrance into the, the natatorium, the pool area. That is a part of the building that is used more than other parts of the building, and it's dark, it's gloomy, it's difficult to maintain, it's not particularly welcoming. So that would be another area that would need some attention. I know there are some concerns about the appearance of that school from the outside, the structural appearance. And I guess since I'm more familiar with that school, having had kids attend there, that I'm not as bothered by it as other people. But I have now found out that there are some high bushes in front of that school that I thought needed to be trimmed, and the reason they haven't been trimmed is because nobody wants to look at the front of the building. So, you know, there are just all those kinds of issues that I think we owe it to that student body and to that staff to work on the aesthetic appeal of the building as well as many other things that would improve the entire environment in the building. So I have assurances from staff that we are prioritizing those, and we'll continue to follow through on those. But there are definitely needs over there.
Mr. Churchman?
Just one other comment I want to add, that is, I walked around with the principals and the teachers, and they talked about all the things they were accomplishing. It was the people in this room that they always referred back to, and time and time again, they talked about placing calls to the facilities organization or whomever it may be and getting immediate action. So I know that it's not just them by themselves, and it's the folks in this room as well.
Well, I'd just like to wrap up just by saying I'd echo the comments about the can-do, the yes-we-can attitude that we see in our facilities. I was struck that the exteriors, if all you do is view the exteriors of our schools or just drive by our schools, you don't begin to understand the story of what's going on inside as far as facilities go. And it's remarkable to go in and to see how we're compromising in situations in order, and the teachers are just moving along with it. I think with the can-do attitude that we have by our teachers, I think some of our teachers could teach out of a cardboard box. They're that effective, and they have that kind of an attitude. But our community demands more. Our community demands that we provide facilities equity. And we could certainly never solve that problem in one or two years, but I think we can begin through this process to make progress on that so that we can remain the district of choice for the families who choose to live here, and we can remain the employer of choice for the educators and administrators that work in our district. So thank you all for your comments, we appreciate that. Mr. Poland?
Just have one other comment. As going through all the schools the last, what, year and a half, I guess, one theme that kept coming to the front to me from teachers, from staff at all the schools, everything like that, is keep the principals in the school. The demands on them are so much that they're not in their own school very, as much as they need to be. And since we're talking about touring the schools, requests, you know, like I said, just offhanded comments were made, hey, the principal needs to be in the school more. So I'm throwing that out.
All right. Thank you all very much. Our next agenda item is comprehensive approach to older, older schools. Laura Lee, are you going to present, begin this presentation?
Well, I'm not, Mr. Thomason, but I am going to introduce the topics. We thought it would be helpful to break up the presentation into chunks. We thought that might be easier. And so we're going to present four chunks tonight, kind of starting with big picture topics and then working our way more towards specifics. And before we begin, I want to make a couple of comments about equity because equity often comes up when we're talking about the needs of our existing schools. Equity has historically been very important in our community. It's been an important value, and that's why you've seen in previous bond elections that we always include upgrades and improvements to our existing schools and more recently in the last decade or so, implementing the upgrades to technology that are present in the newer schools. But how do you define equity? And how do you achieve equity when you don't have unlimited resources? So for example, when you build Elementary 32, how do you define and achieve equity for the 31 existing elementary schools? And that's one of the things that we thought about. So we kind of looked at it in the sense of are, are schools functional for the demands of student learning? Because that's really what we're all about. And what would, what would we need to add or upgrade or improve to keep our schools functional for now and for the future? Tonight, we'll start by taking a big picture look at the differences between the older and the newer schools. And Mr. Thomason will walk us through that, and he's going to talk about how our schools have evolved to meet the needs of student learning. And he's put together a comprehensive plan, a way to address bringing the older schools up to date, that could be staged hopefully with perhaps three or four schools in this bond election, and addressing other needs in future bond elections, but starting with our greatest needs. So that's going to be chunk number one. And then he's going to continue by talking about Central and Ridgeview and looking for problem solving, there's space issues, which the board has asked him to do. And that will be the second chunk. And the third will touch on deferred maintenance and combining that with energy management, the upgrades and improvements needed to improve energy management. And fourth, we're going to build on some of the concepts that Mr. Thomason talked about and talk about an inventory of learning space needs across the district. So we'll start with Mr. Thomason.
Thank you, Laura Lee. And let me also mention, board members, I know this is going to be difficult for you, but we'd like you to hold your questions until we reach that point in the agenda. Mr. Churchman, I'm trying to get us out of here on time. So you've been asking me, when is this meeting over, tonight? But we are trying to facilitate the process. We're going to ask you to try to hold your questions. I mean, if something's burning, we'll, we'll go ahead and ask it. But please try to hold your questions, and we'll ask them all at one time if we can. Thank you.
I believe Mr. Gilmore is trying to be polite by saying that sometimes Greg has a one-track mind, and if you get him off that track, we could have a train wreck right here in front of you. So I think, I think he's just trying to be polite and help me out. I'm going to talk fast tonight because I'm hoping that someone else that wants to see a baseball game tonight, but in case there is, we're going, we're going to go quickly. I don't talk as fast as Dr. Banikowski, but I'm going to go through it as quickly as I can. We're going to assume that if I push one of these buttons, I'll get, there you go. I need, that's it. Thank you, Gary. Tonight, we're going to focus most of our discussion on elementary schools. That's not to say that there aren't problems at the junior high schools, as we've heard discussed already, and that's not to say there aren't problems at some of our high schools. But to a large extent, some of our greatest issues are at our elementary schools, and our problems at the junior high schools sort of run parallel to this. And it's my understanding that we're going to discuss high schools at a later date. So I sort of have skipped over high schools tonight. Historically, the design of our elementary schools have worked from an evolving prototype design. This is a slide I'm sure many of you have seen before. Our design process over the years, and this is sort of a historical perspective, I haven't been here for all of these, all of these projects, but have discussed them with Mr. Davis and some of the architects that were. It's a concept by which we had a prototype, and then based on feedback from the construction of that prototype, it slowly was changed over time so that the schools evolved to be the elementary schools that we have today. The process was with feedback from the staff, those items in the school that worked were, were moved forward to the next design. Those items that weren't working were redesigned or resolved. New programming and advances in technology were taken into account in the designs. That was sort of step one. Step two, what we learned from the design of a new elementary school is then incorporated into our existing schools to the best of our ability. Prior to 1972, the school district, many of you are aware of, had accumulated six very unique multiple elementary schools designed for different purposes and built during the 60s and the 70s. I just go through these because they're all very unique in design. But the one thing they did have in common was that they were extremely small schools on extremely small sites. Other than that, they didn't have a lot in common. Beginning in 1972, there were about 15 schools of a similar design that were constructed. This is what is referred to as Prototype A here on this little drawing. These are what architects refer to as a typical three-section, three-section elementary school. It had 18 general-purpose classrooms, about 44,000 square feet when they were first built, probably had a capacity of somewhere around 400 to 450 students. Early versions that we have talked about, early versions of this prototype, had an open design, didn't have doors on the classrooms, media center open, some of the activity areas open. They didn't have computer labs, they didn't have many of the spaces that day we would consider critical for the educational process. They relied upon one multipurpose room that was both for physical education and for lunch, and it was serviced by an extremely small kitchen that went with it. Flexibility in the building was through these three little areas that we refer to, you hear referred to often as the wet areas. These were small flex spaces built into the, into the buildings. Beginning in 1995, and this was 20 years, 15 schools, beginning in 95, there was a revision to the prototype. It's my understanding, I wasn't here at the time, this was a fairly, starting from, with a blank sheet of paper and beginning again, design of the elementary schools, which ended up in a prototype very similar to what had been built for the last 20 years. This was still a three-section school, had some additional large spaces in it, averaged about 61,000 square feet, had 21 to 23 multipurpose classrooms. Later versions had classrooms here in the front, making this an eight-classroom pod. Major differences, went to four kindergarten classrooms, had a multipurpose room and a dining and a cafeteria that were separate. Had a computer lab, obviously. Went to larger, went to larger activity areas versus the wet areas to provide some flexibility. And we began to see the implementation of some spaces for students with special needs and other special programming, more flexible spaces in the building. Late in the design of Ravenwood Elementary School, we were requested to reevaluate our past designs and to begin the design and construction of what was referred to at that time as a 21st century elementary school. Beginning with the design of Ravenwood and then continuing through the design of Madison Place, that discussion and that evolution of design occurred. Ravenwood was sort of an interim between Prototype B and what today we're building. Ravenwood was a, was our first, what we refer to as a four-section elementary school. 64,000 square feet, 24 general-purpose classrooms, a capacity of, Chris, do we ever decide the capacity?
650.
About 650 students. This design continued the concept of a multipurpose room, cafeteria separate, incorporated larger classrooms, more special programming through special classrooms, and moved the administrative suite closer to the front door to provide more security at the front door, a common, a common complaint about our elementary schools. Situation that allows during the day, visitors enter a vestibule, from the vestibule, they go into the reception area, and then from the reception area on into the school instead of directly into the school. I think we have to be honest, when we started first designing the 21st elementary school, I think we had a whole lot more questions than we had answers. And to be, and to be honest about it, that's why Ravenwood sort of became the interim in that. One of the questions we asked, what is different in the educational process in the, today, in the 21st century that is different than the past? And it took a while for us to sort of stumble across that as designers because as this evolving process, we were always sort of comparing our newest school to the previous schools. And the change was rather subtle from one to the next. Early in the design of Madison Place, as we've been visiting, like you did, countryside, 20-year-old schools, the difference became obvious. The biggest difference between today's need in our schools and the needs of the buildings built in the 78s and 80s is space. This tremendous need for space that a modern elementary school has. Space for technology, computer labs, more and larger computer labs, spaces for evaluation and testing, just the amount of space that technology takes up in a classroom. Well, it adds a tremendous amount to the, the ability of a teacher, it also takes up space in the room. Space for programs with special needs. Special ed programs require a resource room, an OTPT room, a gifted room, a speech room, and a psychology, social worker room at every school. And depending on the school population, there may be an ED or life skills room there also. We have other special programs, that, ELL, Title I. It's sort of difficult to believe that we have 10 Title I schools. Six of those 10 Title I schools are in our pre-1972, smaller, older buildings. And the other four are in Washington, Countryside, Indian Creek, and Haven Croft. Three of those, some of our older, sort of middle-aged buildings. The space need for staff. Expanded programs bring expanded staff. We have more adults in the building than we had in 1970 and 1980. We need office space and administrative areas for that expanded staff. And then storage, the way in which education occurs today, this isn't just storage like my wife needs a closet as big as the bedroom to put her stuff in. This is because of the educational materials used in education today, there's this massive amount of, I'm going to act like I know what I'm talking about even though I don't, they're called manipulatives, and science kits, and
Reading kits.
And reading kits. There's this, it's this box after box after box and tub after tub that need to be stored in the building. This is a man's view of the world, yeah. It's like, the result of that, though, It's like, the result of that, though, is Madison Place Elementary School, the school we have currently under construction. Madison Place is a full four-section elementary school, 66,500 square feet. It'll be the largest elementary school, certainly the largest we've built when it initially opened. I believe possibly the largest one we will have when it's complete. 66,500 square feet, 24 general-purpose classrooms with a student capacity of 650 to 700 students. It continues to use the separate multipurpose room cafeteria, in this case with its own scramble area. I keep coming back to this because as you actually, there's the profession of education and then there's the business of education. And as you watch people try to run a building, lunch becomes a very important part of the day as far as scheduling and sequencing. Our older buildings served lunch in a multipurpose room out of a little bitty kitchen. In our second prototype, we had a separate dining room for them with a larger kitchen, but still the serving line goes out in the dining room. So when the food production workers show up, first thing they do is drag all of that out into the dining room so they can work in the kitchen. The last thing they do before they leave is bring it back in, which means that dining room is tied up the bulk of the day with kitchen equipment. By installing a scramble area similar to the junior high schools, the kitchen equipment is in a permanent location all of the time. The doors are closed to it, which means then that this dining area can become a flexible space during the day. And that's our goal in the design of any new building, is much flexibility. Our goal is to have a building, when you walk in it, there's never a light off in any room because somebody's using it all the time for something. The new dining room has a movable wall that can be closed, divided into two small spaces so during a part of the day or the evening, part of the dining room can be used for another function. I keep coming back to that because it's one of those things that I missed for years until you actually sat and watched principals have to run a building. And lunch is a big part of how an elementary school functions during the day, how fast you can get students fed and how long that takes. We still have improved security at the front door. We have provided resource rooms for storage in each pod to be used by the classrooms in that pod, and the building has the ability to be expanded by 10 classrooms either at this location or at a future location. So the design of our elementary schools has continued to evolve to sort of meet our current demands. Step two, incorporate what we've learned into our existing buildings. Historically, the way we have done that has been through additions, both before I became a part of the school district and since I've been a part of the school district. To date, all of our buildings, with the exception, all of our elementary schools with the exception of six, and I think you'll recognize those as six of our newer schools, have all had at least one addition, some have had several additions. And the impact of those additions, regardless of what our intention was at the time, the impact of those additions have been to increase the capacity of the building, not to deal with special programming. So in fact, those classrooms ultimately became K-6 classrooms and increased the capacity of the building, didn't deal with our increased needs for more space. So that programs like special needs, Title I, and other programs have continued to flow them to those flex areas that we've shown, into the corridors, into basements, because the space didn't exist in the building. With few exceptions, and there are some exceptions to that, we have added computer labs in all the buildings, we've added multipurpose rooms, so to say that all of the additions became K-6 classrooms is not fair, but a significant portion of it has. And we'll discuss additions a little bit later when we get to Central and Ridge View and the difficulty of additions. But I think one of the things that maybe adding classrooms to a building is fairly simple from a code point of view and a construction part of view. A classroom is really just a big box. It's a box with four walls and a ceiling, and it's pretty simple. At some point, though, additions, continual additions to a building that was designed for a smaller population, I'll use Black Bob as an example. Black Bob was originally probably an old three-section school. It's had one addition that was before 1994, because this addition with the multipurpose room was a 1995 addition that I was involved with. At some point, just adding classrooms, you begin to wonder what impact that has on, for lack of a better word, the infrastructure of the building, upon the administrative suite, upon the cafeteria, upon the media center. So that continual additions to a building has to have an impact upon that original building if we don't go back and deal with the infrastructure. I think without getting into a lot of detail, we can really say that the potential problems we result here could be additional traffic on a site by generating more students, and it could be the smaller, you know, the increase in demand for the media center and other parts of the infrastructure. As our buildings have been aging, we've really been facing two parallel issues. And when I say aging today, about 50% of our elementary schools are over 20 years old. By, in five years, 65% of our building, our elementary schools will be over 20 years old. 20 years old becomes significant. In architecture, that's the point at which you would believe the structure of the building, the roof, the walls. Well, roofs normally last 20 years. Walls should last 50 years. The structure should last forever. But interior finishes, mechanical units, begin to deteriorate at 20 years. That would be a reasonable life expectancy for a mechanical system. That would be a reasonable life expectancy for a roof. That would be a reasonable life expectancy for light fixtures. So 20% becomes sort of a point where you begin looking at a building and going, you know, the advantage we've had in the school district is for so many years because of the growth. So many of our buildings have been new buildings, and we haven't had to face this aging problem that we're now facing. Part of that is reflected, Laurie will talk about it later tonight, in deferred maintenance. Deferred maintenance is carpet, paint, doors, ceilings, light fixtures. But a part of it is, as Laurie mentioned, is in this discrepancy in functionality. Functionality being sort of this, does the building function? And the discrepancy in functionality is probably best illustrated by a discussion of the $5 million doors. And I'm sure we've all heard about the $5 million doors, and we've all had a lot of fun giving Greg a hard time about the $5 million doors. That's okay, Greg has thick skin, real good sense of humor. Not many people laughed about that. I have a sense of humor, I just don't show it often. But I'm not going to give up on the fact that the $5 million doors are a symptom of a bigger issue. It's not just an omission in design that is easily corrected. It is an indication of designs that were from a different era for a different use. And as we've moved into the 21st century, some of those designs, not being critical of the designers, we now face issues that they couldn't have seen at the time they designed the buildings. The solution to that, you know, this discrepancy goes beyond just doors on the classroom. It goes to classrooms that are smaller than what we're designing today. Some of these classrooms are 620 square feet. Today's classrooms are 750 to 760 square feet. That's a functional issue in a classroom. It goes beyond smaller classrooms. It goes to existing buildings with smaller support facilities. It goes to existing buildings with inadequate space for special programming. It goes to energy efficiency. It goes to security. It goes to flexibility. Those are sort of the issues that we see and has been referred to in recent years as the comprehensive plan for older schools. And I'm sure, I don't want to bore you by going through it again. That was a, that's a plan by which we would provide in these buildings that have, not just not doors, but even one of the drawings you look at, those are referred to as removable walls or temporary partitions. Would be a case in which we rebuilt the partitions, the partitions and finishes within those classroom spaces with appropriate mechanical and electrical revisions to meet today's standards. We would enclose media centers. We would move the administrative suite closer to the front door, either within the footprint or through additions, to provide more security at the front door. And we would deal with additional spaces for special programming. As I said, the district has faced growth and dealt with it appropriately over the years. In the past, we have dealt with major functionality inequalities in our buildings. As I mentioned before, many of our early buildings didn't have computer labs. It was before the personal computer was known of. Through additions either of computer labs or additions of classrooms so that existing rooms could be converted to computer labs, beginning in 1994 and very quickly, probably before 1997, all of our buildings had computer labs. Beginning with the 1994 prototype, the need for a multipurpose room separate from the dining facility became a need. In '94 bond issue, '97, 2000, and 2003 bond issue, we had funding to correct that inequity. And ending with the cafeteria addition at Northview two years ago, we finally at that time had all 31 elementary schools. I think what we would say to you tonight is that this description and functionality didn't happen yesterday, and we're not going to resolve it tomorrow. But it is a problem, and it's a growing problem, and the sooner we start on it, the easier it's going to be to tackle. And we would concur with past recommendations that in this bond issue, we find funding for three or four of the schools with the greatest needs to begin, and in the future, we find a way to fund the remaining buildings. And that's sort of in a nutshell, the comprehensive plan for older schools. And we're not asking questions, so give me a second here while I try to get my... Now we'll talk about, oops, now we'll talk about probably something that's a little more exciting. Before we begin to talk about Central and Ridge View, there are some things I'd like to say. If you think prototypes are boring, then we're going to talk just 30 seconds about building codes. And trust me, building codes are not interesting at all. Anytime we talk about old buildings and additions to old buildings, I'm always afraid that someone's going to, because when we talk about building codes and buildings not being in compliance with building codes, our buildings are safe. Our buildings are inspected annually by the fire marshal using NFPA 101 as a basis, that's the National Life Safety Code. Our buildings are safe. They are structurally sound and they are safe. Still, it doesn't mean that they may be in compliance with the building code. They're in compliance with the National Life Safety Code. Fire alarms work, fire alarms are appropriate, exiting is appropriate, and the buildings are safe. You will find later on tonight with Chris, and you'll find in a lot of our conversations, we use the term "construction feasibility." Yes, no. Given enough money, we can add on to any of our buildings. At some point, the cost of adding on to that building becomes so high that you have to ask, is it feasible? Are the code enforcement officials going to make us do so much work inside the existing building so that we can add on to the building that it no longer becomes feasible to add on to the building? Other issues might be, could the existing infrastructure stand another addition? I think we've got to be careful and look at what we've learned. There are only so many classrooms you can add to an existing building before you begin impacting the infrastructure and the site. And we have to also look at the site conditions. Is there room on the site for an addition? And we really aren't going to know some of those issues until we actually take a few of these projects all the way through the state and all the way through the city, because it's, you really don't know their reaction to the code until you actually put the drawings in front of them and ask for their opinion. One of those that we've started on at your request and one we'd like to continue on with, whether we find funding for it or not, through the city and through the state, is Central Elementary School. Just because I can stand here and speculate, and we can bring 14 architects to speculate on what the city and the state are going to say, but until we actually put drawings in front of them, we don't know what they're going to say about our older buildings. Central Elementary School, we've been working on this for just a while. On the left is the existing site plan. On the right is a proposed addition on the north side of the building. Those of you familiar with Central, no. There's a small parking lot here on the southeast corner. The front door is here on Water Street. There's off-street parking there, and that's also the bus drop-off. Our proposal would be for an addition that ends up on the north side of the building, allowing us to put a bus loop on the north side of the building, allowing us to put visitor parking on the north side of the building, and basically converting the north side of the building to be the new entry. In plan, that gives us an addition that incorporates three new kindergarten classrooms. When you begin visiting with teachers and principals, and I think the folks in the Bond Task Force and many of you have found, one of the unique classrooms we have in our building is kindergarten classrooms, and one of the things that makes it unique is this need for a restroom closely associated with it. And that's why when we have the opportunity to add on to a school, we try to build kindergarten classrooms when we can. Three kindergarten classrooms, a new lunchroom, a flex space, new public restrooms, and an administrative suite at the front door, making the north entry the new entry to the building. That allows us to take, as already has happened, the existing cafeteria and kitchen, converting those to classrooms. It allows the principal to regain the kindergarten classrooms to be 1 through 6 classrooms. And it also allows to take this existing administrative suite and use it for many of these small spaces. Before, we were talking about special education spaces. Many of these special education spaces are not full-size classrooms. They're less than a full-size classroom. It allows us to take this area and convert it to many of those small rooms needed for special programs. From an exterior point of view, it gives us a new north elevation, which is the new front of the building. In perspective, it is the two perspectives at the bottom of the page, with the perspective here in the upper right being a view of the existing building. This is the existing front entry. One of the real advantages of a central, we're going to find the same thing at Ridge View, 1950s architectural design is not drastically different from 2006 architectural design as far as appearance. So to take, replace the windows, to put some metal shades over the windows, and to be able to take the existing elevation and tie it in with the new elevation, is really not that severe a challenge as one would think so. And it allows us to keep the things about Central that make Central nice. Central has many things that our new schools would never have. It has mature landscaping. It has, you know, when we get to Ridge View especially, we'll find trees that are older than we'll ever have on a Ravenwood site. And they have larger classrooms, they have wider corridors. There are a lot of advantages to Central that really sort of take this to be a plan that allows enough addition to allow the building to move into the addition, to take care of its overcrowding condition, and then refurbish the existing classrooms to bring them up to a standard similar to what we have today. Before the meeting, Mr. Houghton had asked me, based on those little drawings right there, these are some interior views. Once again, you know, Mrs. Ashley, you like light, I like light. I think natural light improves a space, natural light in an interior space helps. One of the intentions, one of the things we do at many of our modern schools, at every intersection of a corridor, you put a skylight, you put a light there. While the corridor may still be dark, there is this pool of light that helps brighten everything around it. And that's what they're showing here, some interior. This is a view walking down the corridor, this attempt to try to blend the new with the old. Based on that, based on the designs we have, our goal is a budget of $3 to $5 million. $3 million at the low end, $5 million at the high end. Don't know that we'll make that goal, that's our goal right now. It's the goal we've given our architects and we'll be giving construction managers at some point. That's sort of our plan for Central. Our next step would be to meet with the staff, work out any details that they have concerns with, and then proceed through the city and state to gain some sort of opinion from them. Ridge View. Oops. Oops. and regional school districts, so we asked them to help us at Regency Place. We've taken a tour of the building with the architects on two different occasions, the principal, Mr. Grollop, and myself. They've, they've visited the building. This, of those of you who aren't familiar with Ridgeview, this is an aerial photograph. Elm Street, Ridgeview Road, an existing building that was built in phases over the years. It has these pods that are very difficult to do anything with, and they're also very difficult to add on to. This at one time had breezeways, car, you know, breezeway, open breezeways that connected it, that have been converted to corridors. There are, there are issues at Ridgeview. Here's, you know, it's not that I'm a Pollyanna, but you know, the glass is half-empty or the glass half-full. Yeah, the glass is half-empty, but it's half-full too. There are a lot of good things going on at Ridgeview. There are a lot of things to be happy with in that building. Same thing again, classrooms larger than we build today in the, in parts of the building, corridors wider than we put in buildings today, mature landscaping. And obviously, the big thing about Ridgeview, it's a school in the right place. It's already where we need a school. Worked for a developer one time, was looking for the perfect site for a shopping center. They ended up buying Ward Parkway Shopping Center and renovating it because obviously there was a shopping center in the right place. Ridgeview is an elementary school in the right place. As we've looked at this, we're still sort of working with the, with the big, the big drawing, with the big picture, not the little picture. We've got, I'm not going to go through all of them, but we basically have A through J as schemes that might happen at Ridgeview. They go from something as simple as some additions along the front of the building, an area that fills in, I would agree with you, someone's observation tonight, all of our older buildings, for some reason, I understand why they didn't have computer labs, but, but people in 1950 had to have restrooms. I can't understand why all the buildings are so restroom poor compared to what we build today, but all of the older buildings are. A central core that allows for just those kind of functional spaces to be put in in some sort of central area, and leaves the bulk of the building at its, it is. The plans, we could go through all of them, but there's a whole series of potential plans, some of them beginning then to deal with this back two-story pod, which is the most difficult portion of Ridgeview. Some of it, some of the plans have us keeping parts of the building and demolishing parts of the building, repurposing parts of the building. And sort of as we go from A to G, they, the work gets more complex and the price gets higher. But if you're doing feasibility studies, then you want to look at every potential. One of the feasibility studies we asked for is, could you, if you demolished the entire building, could you build a new building on the site? And the answer is, yeah, you could. If you wanted to try to build a new building on the site, yet leave the school intact, the answer is going to be a whole lot more difficult. There's really probably not room without significantly impacting the design of the school to build a new school and leave the old school. Our next step here would be to gain any input that, that y'all might have, and then to sit down with the staff. The staff in the building and our staff here at the Ed Center haven't seen these before. Sort of sit down like, through the same process I've been through, which is, what's good about A, what's bad about A? What's good about B, what's bad about B? And at some point, we find plan K, L, M, and at some point, we will find the plan as we look through these pieces. That's where we stand with Ridgeview. And I believe we're at questions.
The only stand, things standing between your break and your break are questions. So, board members?
On our new prototype that we're looking at, does it allow for expansion of the cafeteria as we expand the school? It seems like we're still a bit landlocked in that regard.
The short answer to that is no, but we feel that the cafeteria is large enough to do, when I say that we could add 10 classrooms, I think we feel that the infrastructure of that building, media center, cafeteria, multipurpose room, are large enough to handle those classroom additions without, without stressing the infrastructure of that building. We added extra width to the corridors, we added extra size to the media center, just in case we ever did add on to it. Once again, it's 7,000, 700 students. You know, I don't, I don't know in that particular location when we would be adding on to that school, but the cafeteria is large enough to accept some additional students.
And your thoughts as I look at Prototype D versus Ravenwood? The, it seems like Ravenwood was more, had a more efficient use of land, whether you look at future expansions than going more to a Prototype D.
Ravenwood, see if I can get it back up. Ravenwood versus Madison Place, there are advantages and disadvantages of both. Madison, Ravenwood, if you really look at it, is still four, four, eight classroom pods. Instead of being oriented, instead of being oriented around a central core, they're oriented along a main street. That took advantage of some design concepts at that time. It also took advantage of that site, which was a very long, slender site that didn't allow a square building to fit on it very well. Shortcomings of a Ravenwood-type plan, we have about 35 to 40% more perimeter wall for the same square footage. Doesn't help a lot with energy efficiency, doesn't help with construction cost. When you move to a building like Madison Place, we have almost the same amount of square footage, less perimeter wall, therefore, less construction costs, less maintenance energy cost. Also, when we designed Madison Place, we, we started from pretty much zero. There were three proposals for floor plans presented to the staff. One of them that was called the egg, which was sort of oval-shaped. I mean, there were, there were plans other than that. This appears to me to be the kind of plan that works in a Latha, pods oriented around a central core with this little racetrack plan. So, so that's why we have come back to it. I don't know if that answers your question, but...
It does.
It, it really depends upon the piece of land as to which plan most efficiently uses it. But maybe the simple answer.
Greg, early on, when you were addressing the, the older schools and the challenges that we had with the older schools, I had a question in regard to how you plan to go about designing the suggested or recommended changes for those individual schools, knowing that there is a cost associated with doing those plans. Do you understand?
You mean like Central and Ridgeview?
Well, I'm talking about the schools other than Central and Ridgeview. You talked about the challenges that we have with some of the older schools and the need for, I think you call it the discrepancy in functionality.
Discrepancy, yes.
Is there a plan in place to address those discrepancies, school by school?
No, there's not. No, there's not. And, and what we're really, what we're really, I'll say, I'll answer the question to you the same way I did to the Bond Task Force. What we're hoping is at some point is we can narrow the field. Certainly, there needs to be a school-by-school solution, but right now, the, the gamut of problems that we face, at some point, we need to narrow more with some advice from the school board and some advice from the community on, you know, what is that balance between growth and functionality? You know, I hate to keep coming back to, you know, but, you know, sort of paraphrasing what Mr. Churchman says, you know, the list is long. What we can afford may be shorter. At some point, as we begin working through that process, we know we have to become more detailed in what our solution is at each location, but at some point, we're hoping to get a little more direction in, you know, and where this difference, this, this priority between growth and equity might, might end up.
I'm going to put you on the spot then.
Okay.
How would we go about making that decision, making those decisions? What would our priorities be?
Yeah, that would say, Mr. Parker?
Mrs. Ashley, my, my, mine, mine was going the same direction, and it seemed like that we would need to, to establish some, some baselines, like a reasonable, efficient staff conference room, as a, for instance. The staff conference room at Ridgeview, there is none, and they're making one now by taking, taking space out of the media center, basically taking a third of the media center to make it a staff conference room. So that, a, a, a good teacher's lounge, where the teachers could be able to have their break area as well. And all, all students, all schools had a, had a, a top-notch functional computer lab. The media center, I think every media center in every school should be equitable, they all could be the same. And every, every school, every room would have digital technology. I think those are some basic things that we could start with, understanding that, that Ridgeview might not have the same size of, and may not need the same size of lunchroom or the same size of music room or the same size art room that, that a Bentwood or that a Regency has, or that a Cedar Creek has. But we need to have some baselines here for, you know, when you go to Ridgeview, they don't even have a conference room, and we, that's something that we need to fix.
Well, I think if that's what you're, if that, if that's what you're leading to, I think that's what Laura Lee and Mr. Grollop are going to address later tonight, this inventory, this inventory of spaces within our school district. What, what spaces do we have? What spaces do we need? They have defined some standards for what a spa, they have defined, defined what a classroom is, what a, what a resource room is. So if that's what you're asking, I think that's what Mr. Grollop and Laura Lee are going to talk about later tonight.
Another one would be that, you know, we wouldn't use a closet for a cla, we wouldn't be using a closet for a classroom, we wouldn't have students in the basement.
Am I wrong, is that what y'all are...
You know, we wouldn't have three EL clubs, students sharing a room about a third of the size of this room, and you got three, three teachers trying to teach students in a, in a room that's a third this size. So that, those are just some equity things that I think we would need to be addressed.
I think that, I think, I think with Chris, I think with Chris and Laura Lee give the second half of tonight, they've, they've begun addressing some of those issues. And I guess I didn't quite understand your question. I guess maybe the, the better answer is no. While I may not have an answer, we have an answer. The, the school district has beginning to put together some information on that.
Greg, the proposal on Central was designed, that design is on the existing site as it is today, correct?
Yes, it is.
On the land that's available there.
Yes, it is. Now, it does have, if you'll give me a second, I know there is some, are you leading to this discussion we're having about... This, this is on the existing site. If land were available in that area, it would allow us to expand the playground into that area because we're now building on part of the playground. It would also allow us to potentially expand this access drive further to the east and gain more parking and more bus drop-off area in the front of the building. But, but right now, what we have fits on the existing site. Were, were land adjacent available, it, it could help.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Thompson, I know I agree with the need for natural light, and, and I like a lot what I see here with Central. Have we investigated alternatives to the tower concept?
You mean to this design? No, we've not. I mean, this, this is just a preliminary design. We, we have, you know, miles to go before, before we're through. And, and at some point, the, the, these are elevations that show a potential for what could happen there, not necessarily what is going to happen there. We still have reiterations with code agencies, we have staff comments, we have community input, we have constructibility reviews, we have that, that part of my life that others here don't like, we have the budget that's going to hit at some point. How exactly we introduce natural light into that building, but a, but a part of the benefit of the tower design goes back to what has succeeded, the addition at Northview with its new entry. At some point, an entry needs to look like an entry. One way to do that is with some sort of, you know, construction that makes it look that way. Are we going to be able to afford, everything shown in those renderings, maybe not? It's just like any preliminary design concept, it'll, it'll be, you know, it, it, it will go through many iterations before we reach the end.
The changes addressed at Central and Ridgeview, Chris will handle the growth there?
Correct, we're expecting, um, the additional classroom space that they'll be getting...
Isn't it, come to the mic.
I didn't know if I was loud enough or not. The additional classrooms that we'll be gaining, they will allow it to have three sections of every grade, which would allow it to have up to 60 kids per grade at that school, which is way more than they're at right now and expected to grow to.
Even though we will have some standards, I heard you talk about, that both Laura Lee and Chris will address, which would be standards set for every school. When you look at, at schools like Ridgeview who have the great size of classrooms and yet are missing some other pieces, is staff a part of that input who then says, I've lived in this classroom, I've taught in this classroom, have we thought about, you know, building on the back of the classroom, causing me to lose some space, you know, areas for students to have cubbies and coats to hang? I mean, are we getting that kind of input from our staff who live in those rooms and function in those rooms? Because even though we may have standards that need to be met at all schools, these schools, particularly the older ones, some of them are very unique in their designs, and so thus, other considerations.
There, there is no doubt. At, at Central, the principal there has been a part of every step of the design process, and she is bringing that input from her staff. While, while I and the architects don't bring the staff to every meeting, she is, she is visiting with the staff, gaining their input, bringing it back to the meetings as their representative. What, what I showed you with Ridgeview tonight is the first time we've sort of rolled this out, and the principal there hasn't even seen it yet. But I have every reason to believe that we'll work with Mr. Martin and, and the principal, and we'll do the same thing there, that we'll gain the impact from all the staff. That's the way Madison Place was designed. We, we visited with, I saw Earl earlier, how many different people do we visit with? Dozens and dozens and dozens.
There were several different groups.
You know, we'll visit with the music staff, we'll visit with, you know, the art staff, we'll visit with classroom teachers, and certainly in an existing building where you're doing this kind of renovation, there, there are people you want to find out from. So, so, you know, we, they will have adequate time for input. You know, like many things, I'm not sure that we can respond to all of their input. At some point, at some point, that has to be worked through, and we've always relied on the principal to be the person that helps us with that.
To me, as we look at some of our older facilities, I, I agree with what Mr. Parker has said, and Ms. Ashley, that equity and functionality is absolutely an imperative. I think our older schools have some inherent qualities that our newer schools don't, that don't necessarily impede what we're trying to accomplish there. I, I want to make sure though, as we go through and try and achieve affordability for all the needs that we have, that we don't overbuild, we don't make facilities bigger than what our anticipated needs are going to be. I think our forecasts need to be a lot of our guiding light in that as well.
The one item that I did sort of skip over till the end was the junior high schools. You know, we had talked about elementary schools tonight. Ms. Ashley, to sort of respond, we do, we have looked at Indian Trail, we've looked at the exterior of Oregon Trail, we have some plans for exterior renovations to help those buildings. We have plans for interior renovations, not only deferred maintenance, but to bring those schools closer to the functionality of a, of a Prairie Trail or a Chisholm Trail, one of our newer schools. Some of that's reflected in the bond issue, some of the items in the bond issue, some of it, some of it is probably not. You know, once again, all of those become issues of budgeting and, and funding. But it's not to say that we've ignored the junior highs, or we just focused over at the elementary schools. We've worked on solutions at the junior highs. It just becomes a part of that, that entire sort of funding question as, as to how we fund and what we fund and what our priorities are. So, so, you know, we, they will have adequate time for input, you know, like many things, I'm not sure that we can respond to all of their input. At some point, at some point, that has to be worked through, and we've always relied on the principal to be the person that helps us with that.
To me, as we look at some of our older facilities, I, I agree with what Mr. Parker has said and Ms. Ashley, that equity and functionality is absolutely an imperative. I think our older schools have some inherent qualities that our newer schools don't, that don't necessarily impede what we're trying to accomplish there. I want to make sure, though, as we go through and try and achieve affordability for all the needs that we have, that we don't overbuild, we don't make facilities bigger than what our anticipated needs are going to be. I think our forecasts need to be a lot of our guiding light in that as well.
The one item that I did sort of skip over till the end was the junior high schools. You know, we had talked about elementary schools tonight. Ms. Ashley just sort of responded, we do, we have looked at Indian Trail, we've looked at the exterior of Oregon Trail, we have some plans for exterior renovations to help those buildings. We have plans for interior renovations, not only deferred maintenance, but to bring those schools closer to the functionality of a, of a Prairie Trail or a Chisholm Trail, one of our newer schools. Some of that's reflected in the bond issue, some of the items in the bond issue, some of it, some of it is probably not. You know, once again, all of those become issues of budgeting and, and funding. But it's not to say that we've ignored the junior highs, or we just focused over at the elementary schools, we've worked on solutions at the junior highs. It just becomes a part of that, that entire sort of funding question as, as to how we fund and what we fund and what our priorities are.
Greg, I think it's really important that as we go forward and we look at the bond package, that we be, we're, we ensure that we have included enough in there that we're going to be able to, to accommodate the changes that we need to make at, at a Ridgeview and a Central, and at an Oregon Trail, and an Indian Trail, and Santa Fe Trail for that matter. So that, I, I understand what you're saying, but we still need to make sure that we know what the dollar amount is.
I think, I think tonight, you'll find also in Chris's and Laura Lee's second part, they have some dollar amounts that we've provided with them, that sort of, sort of tie all of these loose ends together and, and begin to give you some idea of what the value of all this is.
Well, with that, why don't we take a 10-minute break? Greg, thank you very much for your presentation. Well, I'll defer to all of you. I'll look for heads to nod. Okay?
When was first pitched?
All right, let's take, take five minutes, and we'll come back for the next presentation.